I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, in the boardroom at the Administration Building 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:32 PM. Board members present are Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, and myself, Maris Alquihano. Mrs. Bickie Morgan should be here for the regular scheduled board meeting at 7:00 PM, as well as Mr. Fred Roberts. Let's establish, let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that a notice of this meeting is posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapters 551. The invocation will be given by Mr. Bailey and the pledges by Mr. Kendrick.
Do you want me to pray? Joy, Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us. We thank you for your blessings and your love. Lord, we just pray that you continue to keep your hand of protection on this school district. Lord, we pray for the families of our district and the kids. We pray for our teachers and administrators and all the folks that make this district work. Lord, we just pray that you'd continue to guide and bless our administration and teachers. Lord, we thank you for tonight, that we can get together and discuss the business of the district. Lord, we just pray that you'd give us vision and wisdom. Also, we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the employment, employment reevaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the probationary contract of Jasmine Broussard and related action. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We now reconvene in open session at 7:03 PM, and that takes us to item number three, special recognition.
Well, board members, and of course, all of you that are attending tonight, I just want to reiterate the fact that we're so very fortunate here in Pasadena ISD to work with a board of this caliber. These folks up here are seven of the most devoted public servants that I've ever met in my life, and they work tirelessly without any monetary compensation. So, once again, they get paid zero dollars and zero cents to do the job of board member for Pasadena ISD. They do it for one reason and one reason only, and that's because they truly care about the students of Pasadena ISD and about the communities that we serve as a whole. So during this portion of the meeting, we usually recognize students and staff for their individual exceptional accomplishments, but I think it's only appropriate tonight that we honor our Board Secretary, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, because this year, if you aren't out in the foyer early, I want to tell you that he is celebrating his 30th year of service as a board member for Pasadena ISD. So he is the second board member to reach this milestone. Many of you remember our celebration for Mrs. Morgan, but again, his years of service have played a significant role in the evolution of our school district. Since 1989, when he was encouraged to run for the school board, he won, and the rest is history. Marshall plays a valuable role in steering our McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament every year and serves, working with our Pasadena ISD Education Foundation Golf Tournament, and he's constantly visible at not only academic events, but also athletics and fine arts events, to name a few. He's always cheering on our PISD kiddos and staff, so thank you for that. Through his tenure as a board member, he served a vital role in implementing special programs for students in CTE, Technology and Special Education, to name a few, and his years in business have served our district well in the area of budget, personnel, and insurance. Outside the district, he lends his times and talents to being an active member and deacon at the South Main Baptist Church, where he serves in numerous ministries. Marshall is definitely a model board member, and his peers and his, of course, our staff are fortunate for his willingness to serve as a champion for Pasadena ISD. So please turn your attention to the screen as we recognize Mr. Kendrick. 1989.
This building has been named for a longtime board member and a current school board secretary, Mr. Marshall Kendrick. He is a man worthy of great honor, and we are thrilled to be here tonight to celebrate him and the contributions he's made to our school district.
So please be a part of it. Go forward to all the students. You're doing your great job.
If his family that could attend would please stand, we want to recognize you. And from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for sharing your husband, and your dad, and your grandfather. You're very lucky. Yeah, I guess you all know that. So we're thankful to Marshall, and now I'm acting like Karen, tearing up over here. That's your role, Karen. So we're thankful to Marshall, and of course, Pasadena ISD is better because of your 30 years of service. So let's applaud again. So this was a surprise tonight, so I may get in trouble for it later, but it's worth it. So we're going to do some student recognition now, so we'll turn our attention to Shannon Regosa, our Fine Arts Coordinator, and she will amaze us with many, many student recognitions. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is with great honor that I recognize individuals that excelled and represented their schools in a number of regional and national art contests. If you'll please hold your applause until the end of each contest, because we have quite a number of students here. Pasadena art students competed in the Austin Rodeo Art Competition. Out of the 64 students selected to participate in the auction during the gala, 22 of those students were from Pasadena. The following students claimed top awards in their divisions. Under the category of digital art, reserve grand champion is Cassandra Kentu, Rayburn High School, and she brought home $1,100.
Or we're not on the black.
Digital grand champion was Joseph Rogers, Rayburn High School, and he brought home $1,600. Photography division, grand champion Cindy Rodriguez, Rayburn High School, $3,000. Traditional art and overall top winners, reserve grand champion Anthony Vega, Rayburn High School, $3,200. And the grand champion was Melissa Sosa, Rayburn High School, and she brought home Pasadena art students sold their artwork and received scholarships for a combined total of $24,350. Would the teachers of these students please stand and be recognized? I would also like to thank all the principals and the assistant principals for their continued support of the Fine Arts Program. Would the parents of these students, if you're in the audience, please stand and be recognized for your support and encouragement. Okay, next contest. Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the longest-running and most prestigious recognition and scholarship program for creative teens in the U.S. The competition is open to students in 7th through 12th grades for art and writing. All works are adjudicated in a blind evaluation, first at the regional level, and then to the national round judged by professionals. Judging is based on three criteria: originality, technical skill, and emergence of personal vision or voice. Regionally, our high school students received 34 honorable mentions, plus two honorable mentions at intermediate level, 27 silver keys, and 20 gold keys, and one gold key painting portfolio, which means a body of work. Additionally, we had two American Vision Award nominees out of only 10 that are chosen in the area. And those two nominees were Anthony Vega and Mario Barone, both Sam Rayburn students. Rayburn High School claimed five national silver medals. The recipients include Carla Caranza, and she received two silver medals, Marco Sosa, a national silver medal, and Anthony Vega, a silver medal. Earning a national gold medal means students are in the top 1% of artists judged from over 300,000 entries across the nation. Included in that special group earning a national gold medal for his painting is Mario Barone. And for the third year running, Rayburn has claimed the prestigious National American Vision Award. A senior walked away with a national gold medal in painting, and the same piece was chosen as the National American Vision Award. And I can't even express to you, my words aren't enough to express what a big, big deal that is. So congratulations to Axel Maldonado. These two students that received their gold medals will be recognized at Carnegie Hall in New York City in June. Their artwork will be on exhibit, open to the public, at the Pratt Institute and the Parsons School of Design. Would the teachers of these students please stand and be recognized? I would also like to thank all of the principals and assistant principals that support this prestigious competition. It's a very tough one, and it means a lot. If you're a parent of one of these students, will you please stand? We thank you for your support and encouragement. Okay, next, one that everybody's familiar with, the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo. Our program had, again, about 300,000 students in the greater Houston area enter judging at the district level. Our students earned Best of Show and Gold Medal awards in each grade division, and special merit awards were earned by students at the high school level. As you guys walk up, I'm going to hand you a trophy for the little ones that don't get recognized at the rodeo anymore for various reasons, but elementary gold medal goes to Giadonna Trevino from Gardens Elementary. And the elementary Best of Show winner is Joshua Washington from Kendrick Middle School.
How wonderful.
Junior high gold medal goes to Joanna Figueroa from Southmore, and she was unable to attend. And the junior high Best of Show goes to Isaac Uterus Diggy from Southmore Intermediate. The high school winners are judged again to be chosen for auction. Students from Sam Rayburn High School represented our district at the rodeo auction. Please step forward when I call your name. Auction lot 60, Angela Alfaro, her work sold for $21,000. Auction lot 48, Alexia Blanco, sold for $8,000, unable to attend. Auction lot 44, Ricardo Padron, sold for $9,000. Auction lot 39, Axel Maldonado, sold for $21,000. Auction lot 20, Fabian Villanueva, sold for $15,000. Auction lot 12, reserve class champion in color drawing goes to Marco Sosa from Rayburn, and it's his piece sold for $38,000. Auction lot number six, class champion in mixed media, Anthony Vega, sold for $55,000. Auction lot five, class champion in color drawing was Joseph Rogers, and his work sold Reserve grand champion, Melissa Sosa. She's been in the auction for all four years of her four-year Rayburn career, and her piece sold for $180,000. And our grand champion, Hector Maldonado. You might have heard the name Maldonado earlier in this lineup. Twin brother to Axel. Grand champion piece sold for a record-breaking $240,000. Sam Rayburn students have claimed the grand champion award in five of the last seven years. This year, their art sold for a grand total of $651,000 of the 2.1 million worth of art at the rodeo auction. We are Pasadena proud.
We had 10 go to auction. How many seniors do we have up here in this lineup? If you'll raise your hand. Would the teachers of these students please stand and be recognized? I would also like to thank the principals and APs from each school for their continued support of the visual art program. If you're a parent and extremely proud of these art students, please stand and be recognized for your support and encouragement. And the students that are holding the reserve grand champion and the grand champion trophies, would you please present those to Superintendent Dr. Deanne Powell, please? Those are the district trophies. I guarantee you, they have their own at home.
Deanne, you might just want to mention San Antonio Rodeo changed the rules so that kids who are not from very close to them could not participate in their art show anymore because the same thing happens in San Antonio every year.
I did want to give a little shout-out to Mr. Regosa, because the caliber of talent that you produce at Sam Rayburn High School is...
His entire team is there, and they're awesome.
Is zero to none?
Yes. Shannon, introduce the teachers, all of them.
My daughter called me from Texas State and said, "Who are these kids that won these awards?" I mean, literally. And of course, immediately, without looking, I knew where they had come from, but I Googled it and I sent her the article, but you guys produce exceptional artists and students.
Well, the Rayburn team that is present tonight is Mr. Victor Regosa, no relation whatsoever, Mr. Gabriel Flores, Mr. Daniel Reyna, Ms. Tara Thompson, she's right there at the back, and Ms. Cara Corville. I know you were here earlier, is she still here?
She's helping us outside.
She's in the hall, she's been helping filter kids back, but thank you very much.
Karen, do you want to move these over there so I don't knock them over? I can't draw a stick figure, but look at these trophies.
Need some help. Way to go, Shannon.
Awesome, awesome. All right, board members, we have a few more recognitions. I want to take this opportunity to specially recognize one of our outstanding employees in his department. This is the third consecutive year, as you know, of our purchasing department to be awarded the TASBO Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. And just to let you know, the Texas Association of School Business Officials, or TASBO as you know it, created the award in 2009 to recognize those school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and regional education service centers in the state that achieve excellence in purchasing operations. So Derek Gillard, if he'll come forward, our Director of Purchasing, and Lori Pruitt, the Assistant Director of Purchasing. They, of course, oversee our daily functions of purchasing and ensure our PISD purchases are all made legally, ethically, and follow federal, state, and local laws. We're just going to embarrass you a few more minutes, hold on. TASBO's Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations was presented to Pasadena ISD at a private ceremony during the annual TASBO Conference in San Antonio on March 7th, 2019, and the award was given to only 35 school districts of roughly 1,000 in the entire state. So please join me in recognizing the purchasing staff and their hard work in obtaining this prestigious award. If you all come forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is an awesome leader and awesome department. They do a great job, Derek and his team. So now I'm going to introduce a friend of ours, Julia Andrews, the School Culture and Climate Specialist with the Harris County Department of Education, and she would like to make a presentation.
Thank you so much, Board President, members of the Board of Education. Superintendent Powell, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Julia Andrews, and I'm the School Culture and Climate Specialist at Harris County Department of Education, and I am here on behalf of Harris County tonight to honor Pasadena ISD, and thank you for your collaboration, partnership, and continued support to HCD E. So we have two plaques and a big crystal plaque for you guys I'd like to present.
Thank you.
Do you want to come down here and take a picture?
Oh, okay, yes, thank you.
We'll just follow you.
Yes.
We had about 15 interested in presenting tonight, and I had to limit that number because this is a big time of year for celebrating student and staff success, as you know, and you'll be participating in. We have less than 25 days of school left, and lots of fun celebrations planned for all the amazing things that have been going on across the district, so thank you.
All right, that brings us to section three, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor? I'm sorry, okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Section four, Personnel Section, item number one, consideration of possible approval of administrative personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through C.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, if I can introduce these, please. First, Julie Tigg Conkle, are you here? Julie, you want to stand up? Julie has been named Licensed Specialist in School Psychology for the 2019-20 school year, and we congratulate you on your new position. I see you have school family with you. Do you have other family with you? Okay, all right. Congratulations. You do have family, all of us here are fans. Lacy Elizabeth Ledbetter. Lacy?
Hi, Lacy, congratulations. Lacy has been named Licensed Specialist in School Psychology, also for the 2019-20 school year. That doesn't sound right, 2020. Okay. Do you have family with you? No, not here, congratulations. And David Ostriker, is he here? Hi, David. David has been named Chief Technology Officer for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year. Congratulations. And you have family with you? Congratulations. And that's it.
Congratulations to all of you, and welcome to the Pasadena ISD family. If any of you were here to support anyone and would like to slip out at this time, this would be the perfect time to do so, or you can stay for the rest of the evening. Yes, we did. We did.
No, I don't think so.
I have.
Okay.
You would like me to do it again?
No, if you just, I just didn't, right now the motion carries. Yeah, I made the motion, Kenny seconded it.
Right. Any discussion?
Board members, we have some folks that worked really hard on this. Karen, do you want to have your team stand up?
Scott and our ELA and SLA team, if y'all stand up. This is very, very hard work. I don't believe it, but we cut it to the vote. With those numbers, it doesn't seem right.
Scott, did you have anything else?
I was just going to say Chris and Amber spoke in libraries with the.
Oh, yes.
He's a special material. Walk this through the class.
Oh, that's wonderful, wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, consideration and possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School qualifying team members to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana on June 21 through 24, 2019, to compete in the U.S. High School Bowling National Championship.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Any of that team or teacher present?
Our coach is present.
Coach, congratulations. Looking forward to finding out, y'all bring home the trophy, the gold.
Yeah, and I'm going to specifically call out, it's not just Dobie, it's Pasadena and the whole. The whole district supports these kids from north and east and Kedale, setting up the program without them and without the regional structure and the state charter that's sort of out there. So it's a mixture of great Pasadena family as well as great people. So I'm going to decide to give it a third chance.
Good, all right.
Congratulations, thank you.
Is this a national sanction? It's all about definitions of sanction. There's USBC, it doesn't fall under USBC. None of the state or regional programs do. USBC is a completely separate entity, but there are numerous colleges that go or could use USBC.
Good, good.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have bowling alleys in our high school?
We do not have bowling alleys, but we do have partnerships with, of course, Armadillo over here, and over, y'all practice off Fuquay?
Yeah. Pasadena ISD has agreed with Armadillo 1 over our president, and they're constantly supporting us and giving us good deals on prices for these kids to come out and bowl. A lot of these kids are produced by the youth program over in Armadillo 2 as well.
Great, thank you so much. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3, consideration and possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School to travel to Lincoln, Nebraska on June 24 through 29, 2019, to attend the National Thesbian Competition and Festival.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Any of that team or teacher present?
Our coach is present.
Coach, congratulations. Looking forward to finding out, y'all bring home the trophy, the gold.
Yeah, and I'm going to specifically call out, it's not just Dobie, it's Pasadena and the whole. The whole district supports these kids from north and east and Kedale, setting up the program without them and without the regional structure and the state charter that's sort of out there. So it's a mixture of great Pasadena family as well as great people. So I'm going to decide to give it a third chance.
Good, all right.
Congratulations, thank you.
Is this a national sanction? It's all about definitions of sanction. There's USBC, it doesn't fall under USBC. None of the state or regional programs do. USBC is a completely separate entity, but there are numerous colleges that go or could use USBC.
Good, good.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have bowling alleys in our high school?
We do not have bowling alleys, but we do have partnerships with, of course, Armadillo over here, and over, y'all practice off Fuquay?
Yeah. Pasadena ISD has agreed with Armadillo 1 over our president, and they're constantly supporting us and giving us good deals on prices for these kids to come out and bowl. A lot of these kids are produced by the youth program over in Armadillo 2 as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Good.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 3, consideration and possible approval for Pasadena Memorial High School to travel to Lincoln, Nebraska on June 24 through 29, 2019, to attend the National Thesbian Competition and Festival.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 4, consideration and possible approval for the members of the Pasadena Memorial Environmental Council to travel to Washington, D.C. June 18 through 20, 2019.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Yes. What exactly is this?
This is a grant. Do you want to explain a little more?
It's a grant that our science department has worked together, got a $20,000 grant to help the students in the school learn about how the environment, how the air quality and environmental issues that we have and what we affect with the air quality, and so actually with the fires. It was something that we, because we have a purple air sensor on our building, that we learn very quickly how effective that is. But that's a small portion of that. So what we do is have the students experiment, they've gone down to the ship channel, to learn about what's affecting, what's causing the solution, and help partner with the community to improve the air quality, to improve the pollution factor that we have. And so the students want to go, they've been asked to go to Washington, D.C. to meet with the EDF and to visit the different organizations that support the grant.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
So this was obviously planned prior to?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5, consideration and possible approval of two San Rayburn High School art students to travel to New York City, New York, June 5 through June 9, for the National Scholastic Art and Writing Competition Awards Workshops to be held at Carnegie Hall and various other locations around the city.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6, consideration and possible approval for the San Rayburn High School Texan Dance Team to travel to New York City, New York, November 22 through 25, 2019, to take dance workshops and experience live dance performances.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Question. Any chances this is going to correspond with the Thanksgiving Macy's Parade so that they might? Thank you.
Too bad.
Both of my older daughters were on Texan Dance Team, and both of them went to New York City. That was basically their senior trip, and it was absolutely an awesome experience for those kids. It's amazing up there. It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Section 6, Student Achievements, none additional at this time. Section 7, Policy Update and Review, none additional at this time. Section 8, Financial Section, item number 1, consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments for the month of March.
I move that we approve the budget amendment.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, consideration and possible approval of the Interlocal Contract and Resolution with Education Service Center Region 20, PACE Purchasing Cooperative.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Board members, we do have Joe Blazi here, our consultant, Roger Montemayor, the Vice President, and then I don't think you need this gentleman's name called out, but Bill Barmore, our friend. But again, they're here if you have any questions. And then Mr. Roberts, I just want to point your attention to the crisis protection. We had talked about that last year, and we've added that to our policy.
Don't you ask if there's any questions?
Yes.
On the 75 million, is that 75 million over each one of these items, or is it broken down into individual basis?
Yeah, if we can have you come up to the microphone, please.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Powell, Mr. Roberts, the 75 million you're referring to, are you referring to the windstorm limit, or?
Is that the windstorm limit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, and so these other individual items, or what?
The other individual items are the other coverages within the package, such as auto liability, law enforcement liability.
So auto liability is a million 38?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so then the trip travel is 14,000 max?
That's correct.
Is that liability, or what is that?
That is a liability product.
So all we have is $14,000?
Oh, no, these are the.
Is that the cost?
That's the cost.
Right.
These are the premiums, yes, sir.
Okay, so how much is there on trap, liability coverage is there on trap?
I believe the limit is $1 million per occurrence.
Okay, is that on everything here? Is that basically everything's 1 million?
Yes, sir. And then, well, each coverage has a separate limit, and then understand there's also tort immunity protections that would apply, that the carriers would invoke as a defense for the district. But typically, the limits are $1 million for liability insurance, that's correct.
Okay, now I like the, like she said, the crisis type of coverage, but was any of that coverage in any of this last year?
No, sir. This is a new product that we've done considerable research over the, since the last board meeting to evaluate the various alternatives available in the marketplace. And of course, this is an evolving insurance product, as you can imagine, but we feel like this is the broadest coverage available in the marketplace today.
Okay, so assault, blackmail, civil commotion, cyber extortion, none of that stuff had any coverage on it?
Well, there was coverage, for example, cyber risk, there was a cyber risk policy in place. Really, what this package is attempting to do is broaden the coverages that we have, as well as include some extensions of coverage. But this is more of a package approach to the malicious attack and other fraudulent attacks against the district and its.
What about employee dishonesty?
That, we've always had that, that's always been in the crime insurance policy.
What was it added for?
Well, it's a part of the package, so we're not necessarily paying an additional premium for it, but it's a part of that package product that is including the malicious attacks coverage. And that's the bulk of the premium charge for that product.
Okay, that's all the question there.
Is a million dollars sufficient coverage for liability?
Well, I'm specifically speaking to the auto liability, or general liability, where there's tort immunity caps. And so typically, what school districts do is they purchase a limit just for defense costs, because effectively, you'll be pleading out of those allegations for bodily injury and property damages on the basis of the Tort Claims Act. But for example, board legal liability, or employment practices liability, where we don't necessarily have those immunities, there's a higher limit purchased.
Thank you.
Why does the crime go up and then cyber go down?
The, it's typically, that's a good question. The crime is really a function of number of employees, and so the employee count can affect that. There have also been a number of crime, if you will, claims affecting Texas school districts in the past few years, employee dishonesty claims and those sort of things, making this a less desirable class for the underwriters.
The cyber?
The cyber is just becoming, it's evolving as a market, and it's becoming a more healthy market, and so there's more competition. Just like with the malicious acts coverage, which is a relatively new coverage, I think we'll start to see the premium for that go down over the coming years. When cyber first came out, it was a very expensive product, because underwriters weren't real sure what they're getting into. But now that they have a better spread of risk, and there's more people buying cyber insurance, we're starting to see more competition, and we're starting to see premiums go down.
Is there still a committee on this, or was there ever?
Oh, we have a.
With one individual.
And Carla can answer that question.
Yes, sir, we do have a committee. We start early in January, going through all the applications, and then Joe, Bill, and Roger, myself, and we include Jody on some of the things, depending on which one of the policies it is, and so we go through them all. And it's a very ordeal, the way we go through it. So that is our insurance committee.
Okay, so the insurance committee that selects who's going to do the work is made up of yourself, the people that are selling the stuff?
Yes, sir.
And who else? One other person?
Well, Jody looks at the one for the legal side, and so she looks at that side of it, and that's our committee, yes. For next year, if you would like us to increase it, we'd be more than happy to bring Derek in with being our purchasing director, and we can increase that side to look at it.
Well, I just think that you need to have a greater independent look at it versus, no offense, other than the people that are selling this stuff.
Right.
Okay, that's all. And keep a proactive approach to it.
I think that's what we're doing, basically. Based on some of the questions that you had last year, I think they've looked at things.
And I appreciate them looking at it. All I like to do is see some people that are outside the sales arena looking at it also. That's all.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I know. I screwed it up. I messed up, I'll just be the first one to admit it. I got so excited about the insurance staying down toward a reasonable increase, that I went to agenda item early on that. So we're really not on insurance, but I'm glad we got all that out of the way. So I'm going to leave it up to the board president, and I'll stay quiet.
So we actually discussed, we actually went on to the next agenda item. So let's go back for a moment. We were actually, we had a motion on item 2, which was consideration and possible approval of the Interlocal Contract and Resolution with Education Service Center Region 20, which is the PACE Purchasing Cooperative, which was not property and casualty insurance.
Sorry.
So I would just want to refresh everybody, Ms. Morgan made the motion, and Ms. Sullivan made the motion. So did anybody have any discussion regarding the Education Service Center?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, item 3 is consideration and possible approval of the Property and Casualty Insurance Program for 2019-20.
So move.
Second.
And I have a motion for Ms. Morgan, and a second for Ms. Sullivan. Does anybody else have any further discussion on that item?
I agree with Mr. Roberts' comment that we want to see others on the committee.
Okay, I'm sure Deanne will make a note of that.
I have.
Let me ask you a quick question. Do we need to amend that to add the 66933 if we're going to put it in there? Admon, the motion.
What?
The 66983 is added on to the original motion, which was for the 7 million 2. So down below, you see Gallagher Crass is protected. If we're going to add that, do we need to amend to add that to this?
I think that most.
I think that.
Or is it a total amount?
It's part of the consideration, as I said.
Yeah, I thought it was.
It's in the minutes, it's on the agenda.
All right, I'm just sitting here looking at the thing.
Any further comments now? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 4, consideration and possible approval of the Whitley Penn LOP as the independent auditor for the 2018-19 school year.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
And I think I have the right item. Loopy Garcia, the senior partner, is here, if we have any questions about this item.
Thank you.
Is this a new one?
It is a new auditor, yes. They went out for RFQ.
I'm happy you're in here.
Yeah.
Do they plan on changing?
What is an RFQ?[1743.12] What is an RFQ?
Request for proposal.
Okay, just did over.
Yeah, that's a P. What's the RFQ?
No.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consideration and possible adoption of the board resolution regarding employee compensation for March 20 through 22nd, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Sullivan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of the board resolution regarding declaration of emergency employee compensation and purchases due to inclement weather on April 7th through 2019.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Kendrick, a second by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion?
Good move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section nine, operations section. Item number one, consideration and possible approval of the transfer of 2011 bond program unused project funds to the bond contingency pool.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the continuation of priority facility upgrade projects and funding by the 2014 bond contingency pool.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the HVAC testing and air balancing services agreement for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration and possible approval of license agreement between the City of Pasadena and the Pasadena Independent School District.
I'm so moved.
Second.
I think it's wonderful that they're going to do that.
Yeah. Not to see a change, isn't it?
Oh, Lord, yes.
Great improvement with the city.
Absolutely.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 37, for the new Palmroy Elementary School replacement project.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of the final change order number two for the new Palmroy Elementary School replacement project.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of a construction contract for the South Houston High School Science Labs renovations project included in the 2017 bond program.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
Deanne, excuse me, sorry. Go ahead, Melda.
Any idea as to how soon we can start construction on these much needed projects?
We actually have Jamel Construction Representatives here. Kevin, you want to come forward and introduce and then talk about the timeline?
That was my question, too.
First of all, I'd like to introduce Jamel Smith Construction, new contractor to the district. They were low bid and scored highest on all the categories and ranked them on, so we're excited to start a new relationship. They're a reputable firm, has worked in multiple districts. Tonight, we have Mr. Jim Jamel, the owner. We have Devin Pryor, Assistant Operations Manager. Brad Hooper will be the project manager for the project. And then Stuart Bank will be the project superintendent. So very strong team. Their resumes were very impressive, so. The timeline, we're going to do a pre-construction meeting actually this week. We're already starting to coordinate the moves that are going to be necessary. We're starting to get the chemicals out that we need, look at the furniture. So we're going to get into some areas, I think, as soon as we can. The majority of it will start at the beginning of the summer, but we're hoping to get in there sooner and get a head start on it, so.
Awesome. So the summer's going to give us some good working time. Students are moderating.
Correct.
Great. You and Mel, we can do it. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Any other construction questions while you're up?
I think he had another question.
Okay.
I need to go back to the insurance.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and vote on this item real quick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
Go back.
Sure.
Okay. Madam President, if you go back to page 140, let's see, here we go, 133 and 132, I believe, and I may be wrong unless you... Where'd your insurance guys go?
Yep, Mr. Barmore.
I took a bath today.
Well, if you look at the difference between the 6 million and the 7 million, it's $31,000. This is everything that you had in 2018-19, did not include that 66,000 or anything like it. If you go over to page 132 where it talks about it, it says Gallagher has a new crisis protect, we would like to consider. Okay? So the line item down here, 66983, is a consider. Now, I don't have any problems with it, but I don't believe that it's part of this. Now, if Gallagher is saying they'll do it for that price, that's fine. Didn't they do it for that price and they include the 66,000? Otherwise, we still need to go back and add the 66 if it's not part of the 7 million. Am I wrong?
You are correct. The 7 million is for the insurance and the 66,000 is to consider that crisis management that y'all asked about last year that we brought forward. So yes, you are correct.
You have to vote on that 66,000 because what your motion was, was on the basis of the 7 million, 2, 160 and 50 cents, so.
So were we bringing the 66 back at a later time?
No, we can approve the 66. We listed it separately because the 7 million is what we've currently had in the past. And the 66 was new for the crisis management, and so there's 2 on there. And so the 7 million is for the current, and then the 66,000 is for if we want to add the crisis management.
There should have been recommendations.
So it doesn't fall under the property and casualty insurance program?
Yeah, the recommendation was to recommend the approval of it.
The property and casualty. So is it part of property and casualty?
It's a separate item.
So is it part of property and casualty insurance?
It's an addition.
It's an addition.
It's an addition.
It's a rider.
Since we're, we're not posted for that, though, right?
We'll bring it back.
Bring it back.
Bring it back.
It was in here. I thought if it's part of the casual, what you worried about?
Well, it's not part of the recommendation from administration, though.
You can go back and amend the motion.
So there's different procedural things we can do to amend the motion to make it more clear tonight. The way that I guess I would have understood this is that the entire property and casualty insurance program that's being recommended is the night, for 1920, is everything you had last year with the addition of this this year.
That was fine.
And so...
So then it goes up from the 7 million, you take that 7 million, and you add 66 to it?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but that's not how it's written. It's sold over here, consider. You've got to go back and you've got to amend it to add the 66.
Okay, and so if you'd like to do that...
Oh, that we would like to consider.
Yeah. Add it to it, but you just have to amend to add it on.
Since we've already voted on it.
The appropriate procedure would be to rescind the vote and to reconsider that motion. Someone would make a specific amendment to include both the chart that's listed and the addition of that amount for that specific project. We would vote on the amendment, and then we would vote on the motion as amended, and once approved, that could move forward, and it would all be properly considered under the agenda posting for tonight.
I move that we, to rescind the motion made on this, the approval of property and casualty insurance program for 2019-2020.
I second. Now, we go back, correct?
So you vote on the motion to rescind?
I'm sorry. Okay. You could have thrown it in, Billy.
The difference between last year and this year is only $31,000. That's where it's at.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts, to rescind the original motion, or the original vote to consider impossible, possibly approve the property and casualty insurance program for 2019-20. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now you make the motion.
Go for it.
Now you make the motion.
Now you're making the motion.
You make the motion as stated.
You make the motion.
Okay. I make the motion as stated at the 7 million, 2, and the 66, 66983, the Gallagher Crisis Protect program, or whatever you want to call it.
Second.
Crisis Project Protect Insurance.
I have a motion that Mr. Roberts makes 7 million, $2,160.50 plus Gallagher Crisis Protect, $66,983.
Is that the recommendation of administration?
The intention was, yes, to give all the coverages that we had in our previous coverage as well as add the Gallagher Crisis Protect. So that is the recommendation.
Which is the approval of the property and casualty insurance program for 2019-20.
Yes.
And I have a second by Ms. Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'll write that for you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Good job, Fred. Thank you. Section 10, construction update. Does anybody have any questions? Section 11, miscellaneous section. Item number one, additional communications. We don't have any at this time. Item two, public comments, none at this time. Item three, announcing board credits. Dexter?
Under the same board of education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. The board president is required to announce the name of each member who, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, one has completed the required continuing education, two, R has exceeded the required continuing education, and three, is deficient, if any members are deficient, in meeting the required continuing education requirement. There are four tiers or categories of board members continuing education required by the law. Tier one, local district orientation, basic legal orientation and legal update training. Next, tier two is team building, training with all board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education, and tier four, evaluating and improving student outcomes.
Thank you. As board president, I hereby announce the completion of continuing education credits received by the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees for May 1st, 2018 through April 23rd, 2019. The following information will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Tier one, legal update training. This year, there are no tier one training requirements of any type to be announced for any sitting members of the board. Tier two, training, team building training. The following board members have completed the required team building training. Marisol Quijano, Nelda Sullivan, Marshall Kendrick, Jack Bailey, Fred Roberts, Kenny Fernandez, and Vicky Morgan. Tier three, annual continuing education. The following board members have exceeded the tier three annual continuing education requirements. Marisol Quijano exceeded the requirement of five hours. Nelda Sullivan exceeded the requirement of five hours. Marshall Kendrick exceeded the requirement of five hours. Jack Bailey exceeded the requirement of five hours. Fred Roberts exceeded the requirement of five hours. Kenny Fernandez exceeded the requirement of five hours. Vicky Morgan exceeded the requirement of five hours. Tier four, evaluating and improving student outcome training. Tier four is required once every two years. All seven board members completed this training in March 2018 at Winter Governance. Records of the training received by individual board members are available for public inspection at the superintendent's office. That completes that portion.
Can we act that smart?
And finally, item four is set the date for the next regularly scheduled board meeting, and the meeting is suggested to be Tuesday, May 21st, 2019.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?